Good evening and thank you for joining us for our December 11th regularly scheduled school board meeting. At this time, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, board members. I will call the meeting to order. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda tonight, so with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
A motion by Bianca and a second by Art. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 7-0 vote. First off is our favorite portion of our board meetings, our recognition portion. So at this moment, I'd like to call up Coach Brett Kosadowski to the podium to introduce our Dakota United Hawks adapted soccer CI Division second place state champions.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and our number one Dakota United Hawk fan, Mary Krieger. My name is Brett Kosadowski, and I'm the head coach of the CI Adapted Athletics Soccer Program, the Dakota United Hawks. I want to thank you for having us here to be recognized for our accomplishments this past season, and we captured the second-place tournament finish this past month. The Dakota United Hawks had an amazing season that featured many highlights. Thanks to the school district, 196 board, members and families, our program is once again the largest in the state of Minnesota. We have amazing families and students that are fully committed to making our program the best it can be by their dedication year in and year out. I would also like to thank Matt Percival, our athletic director, for all the time and energy that he puts into our program. Lastly, I would like to thank my wife Erin and children, Kinsley and Kayden, for allowing their dad to work with the Dakota United Hawks after school each day and promote a program as amazing as our kids. Genius Albert Einstein would state that the term for insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. And somehow, there are people out there that might say our Dakota United team falls under this definition for completing a great season to only fall to the Lakeville Blazing Cats team for a third straight year in the championship game. What those naysayers don't know is the fact that we graduated three to four senior starters from each of those previous seasons and had to rebuild from within. And we've been able to accomplish a state runner-up finish during those years that most would call a rebuilding season. I can't say enough about these students during what most teams would, sorry, that show up each day in and out to accomplish their goals each year. They pick up each other and stay positive even in the face of adversity. That is an achievement that we can hang our hats on. The future is bright for this team, and I look forward to taking the field with them next fall as we continue our pursuit of excellence once again. The expectations are always sky-high, and we won't have it any other way. Congratulations to this terrific team, and the Dakota United Hawks that are being recognized tonight are Mark Manwarren, Colin Price, Henry Isley, Miles Johnson, Melina Finch, and Kyle Jacobson. Your Dakota United Hawks.
Next up, under recognition, I would like to welcome Coach Steve Eccleston to the podium to introduce to our Dakota United Hawks adapted soccer PI Division third-place state champions.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Thank you for having us tonight. We are the Dakota Hawks PI Division. We finished third place this year in state. We had an amazing year. Lori Bexer was the head coach. She's not able to be here tonight. Also, Jacob Moss, he is not able to be here tonight, but I have with me Coach Paul Stokie here to help me out. I'd like to introduce the team that's here so far. Amisha Eders is here. Can you raise your hand, Amisha? Thank you. Chloe Sabata, thank you. Last names are kind of hard for me at this point because I know them by first name so well. Dylan Burns, Reese Martin, and Livia Grossbauer. Perfect. All right. I'd like to thank Mr. Percival for his season as the athletic director. Does a great job all the time. Right now, we were five and two overall this season. We did not have a lot of games this year. We don't have a lot of other teams and a lot of kids that are out for PI right now. So, and then in the state tournament, we finished third. As I said, we beat Park Center 5-4, Minneapolis South, we lost 2-4-1, then we played in the third-place game against Rochester, and we won 5-1. That is our season, and thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Congratulations. Awesome job. Congratulations. Great job. Thanks for being here. Awesome job. Congratulations. Awesome job. Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming. All right. Lastly, on our portion of recognition, I actually get to do this one. We have a special guest here tonight, Director Joel Albright, on his last school board meeting of his 20-year career, serving District 196 community and our schools. Little fun facts about Joel Albright here. So he was actually first elected back in 2003. Yes, our records go back that far. And he started his service here in January of 2004, which means it's exactly 20 years of service to our school district. During Joel's time on the board, he was helped pass three different bond referendums, one in 2004, 2015, and 2023, and four different levy referendums, one in 2005, 2013, and 2019. He also served for a time as the district director, representing all school districts in Dakota County to the Minnesota State School Board Association, and he served for our schools and equity education boards. So Joel, I just wanted to say, I'm sure there'll be time at the end of the meeting where I'm sure every board member will probably have something to say. You've made an impact on all of us in your 20 years here, but I would just like to start off by saying thank you very much for your time, and I have a little thank you for you, your bell that you well-deserved for your 20 years on the board.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for her recognition of students and staff.
Congratulations to all the students who have and will be giving performances in band, choir, and onstage for winter concerts and plays. I recently attended high school performances at Eagan. I saw The Rock of Ages and Eastview Mean Girls. They were both absolutely incredible. I am just so impressed. Every time I go to a performance, the talent that our students have and clearly the talent that our adults have to help them recognize and realize their gifts is amazing. So I highly encourage you to keep track, go to the websites, keep track of the performances. I can guarantee you, it will be absolutely one of the best evenings that you could have over the next few weeks. Next, I want to congratulate the students and staff at the School of Environmental Studies who hosted state legislators, officials from the Minnesota Department of Commerce, members of the media, and other guests on November 29th to help promote the state Solar for Schools program. The event received some coverage on local TV Noem shows that day. At this time, I would like to share a short video about the event that was created by our communications department.
So we're super excited to be here at SES. We are celebrating solar panels. We learned a couple of years ago that Minnesota State was going to offer different grants. They're calling it Solar for School. Grant opportunity is to put solar panels on different schools throughout the state of Minnesota. We didn't know how hard it was. We didn't know what was in front of us, but all we knew was that if a school in Minnesota was going to have solar panels, it better be the School of Environmental Studies. This is such a no-brainer kind of solution, and it's a win-win for the schools, for the environment, for so many reasons. We built a really strong coalition that supports it all across the state. I think it's transformational, and it's exciting that they are learning about this and excited to find ways to apply it.
I was so proud of my students sharing experiences about sustainability, about solar energy and alternative energy, about ways that we can reduce runoff into our water systems, ways we can reduce waste and really sort correctly in our schools. I'm just so excited that we got to have all these new partners, legislators, people from the district, people from the zoo coming in to talk with our students.
A lot of it's about public speaking, which wasn't something I was good at before. So we would need to ask questions and interview and email. I wasn't really comfortable doing that, but this class helped me master that ability.
Luckily, all of our students have kind of had the opportunity to get hands-on and learn about this and just spread awareness to other schools and communities about how easy some steps are to do to help change the world.
Experiential education, project-based learning, ability to actually talk and connect with real people outside these walls is something that really hits me in the heart, and I really care about our students thinking about the world ahead of them and the things that they will be facing.
Our future leaders, our students, are going to make change, is to understand how they happen on a big scale and on a small scale. And so the sky is the limit, and we hope that other schools are really able to take what we've done and be really as inspired as we are.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Krieger. We don't have anyone signed up for special communication requests tonight, so that brings us to our consent agenda. We have 18 items on our consent agenda. They are the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 special school board meeting, meetings of November 13th, 2023 regular school board meeting, advertising revenue, gifts, quarterly gifts, grants, treasures report for October 2023, summary of claims for October 2023, schedule of investments for October 2023, revenues of and expenditures report for October 23, personnel employment agreement, pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees, agreement for student teaching experience, Metro Street University, joint powers agreement for smoke-free cohort services between the county of Dakota and Independent School District 196, policy 405, employee rights, designation of combined precincts and polling places for 2024, and right-of-entry agreement with the city of Apple Valley. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to pull tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin, second by Jackie. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to our reports items, and I would like to welcome Mr. Mark Stotts to the podium to give us a bond referendum update.
Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, I want to start out by saying, Joel, congratulations for your 20 years, and I've really enjoyed working with you the past five years. Your knowledge of the school district and your expertise are really going to be missed, so thank you very much. With that, I haven't been in front of the board for a few months, but we've been really busy since May, planning for the referendum, and tonight we have a presentation to kind of give the board an update and give the public an update as to what's been happening since the May vote was successful and as we plan for the projects going in the future. So just as a reminder, this slide shows the three areas that we really focused on during the course of the referendum. The first one was to address growth in the district, particularly in the southeast portion of the school district. The second circle there is consistent experience so that students, regardless of which school they attend within the district, are provided the same educational opportunities. And then finally, and this will probably be a recurring theme in future bond referendums, but we want to continue with our safety, security, and supervision updates. You've seen this picture numerous times, but it depicts all the committees that are involved in planning all the various projects within the scope of the referendum. And so I'll go to the next slide, and we're going to kind of focus on what's happening right now. And I know it's kind of difficult to see because there's a lot on this slide, but we have many, many different groups that are meeting and planning on behalf of the referendum. And the first group is the Safety and Security Advisory Committee, and I'll be talking more about each of these groups as we move along tonight. Then we have the Energy and Sustainability Advisory Committee, Middle School Philosophy Task Force, the Science Task Force, and then Dynamic Learning and Educational Furniture Group. Then we have the Planning Group for the Elementary Number 20, the Rosemount Middle School Core Planning Group, and the Dakota Ridge Core Planning Group. And we've also moved into planning for performance, space improvements, and activity center improvements. And in fact, today, we are on a tour of activity centers in Shisago Lakes, White Bear Lake, and Stillwater. And so that was very informative for the committee members. You can see the information that is derived through the work of these committees. Our Facilities Department is a part of all these committees, so they have a lot of input into the direction that we're going. The Project Oversight Committee is 13 participants, the majority of those people are cabinet members, and they will be responsible for forming the recommendations that ultimately come to you as the school board. So we'll start out with the Safety and Security Advisory Committee. We have 15 participants on that committee. They've had 11 meetings. We actually might be a little bit higher on some of these slides since we've had meetings since this was put together, but really, the focus is right now has been on camera replacements and expansions district-wide, radio replacements district-wide, secure entrances, particularly at the Cedar Valley Learning Center and Dakota Valley Learning Center, and then fire alarm replacements at select locations. Now, you can see that their work is going to have an influence on other groups like the Rosemount Middle School Core Planning Group, the Elementary 20 Planning Group, and also CVLC, DBLC, and others. The Energy and Sustainability Advisory Committee, we have seven people on this committee. We've met nine times, and you can see their work is going to have an influence on Elementary Number 20, Rosemount High School Core Planning, and the Rosemount Middle School Planning. They've really focused on three different distinct areas as it relates to energy and sustainability. The first area is environmental stewardship, which is things like integration with natural environment, water conservation, embodied carbons. The second area is energy carbon reduction, and so we've really focused on energy use, operational carbons, renewable energies, and then finally, the quality interior environment. We want to make sure we have good indoor air quality, occupant comfort, and acoustic control. So what does that look like for various projects? For Elementary School Number 20 and the new Rosemount Middle School, it means that we may incorporate solar and geothermal. Our goal is to have these two facilities be net-zero ready. So that means, or that does not mean they'll be carbon neutral or net-zero on the first day they open, but we hope to get them there down the road. Rosemount High School, we're planning a solar project there, and we've got other projects to be determined. And then we've talked a lot about other pilot strategies. Do we include EV charging stations at certain locations? Bird-safe design, particularly with the new elementary school and the new Rosemount Middle School, native plantings, those types of things. The Performance Space Improvement Advisory Committee, 13 participants, they've had four meetings. The major takeaway from this committee is that we haven't made any big decisions at this point, with the exception of, we know we're going to have a pretty significant project at Scott Highlands Middle School. They are the one middle school without a performing arts space, and so the plan there is to incorporate that as we move through this process. The Science Task Force, 11 participants. We've had more than two meetings. We've split this group into a middle school science group and a high school science group. And you can see that their work will also have an impact on the new Rosemount Middle School as well as Rosemount High School renovations. And they continue to work. Again, no final decisions have been made with that group, but we're looking at the impact of their work on the secondary schools in the district. Elementary Number 20, we have 15 participants, mostly Eastlake staff, and in particular, Miles Haugen has been really instrumental as he is the principal of Eastlake Elementary. They've had six meetings. Keep in mind, Elementary Number 20, we do have the site, and I've got a kind of a site design coming up here. It is intended to be a replication of Eastlake School with certain modifications, including a storm shelter, which is now required for any new building, code updates, enhanced privacy toilets, kitchen updates, additional early childhood spaces, and special education wing. And here you can see the site that is located at the intersection of Bon Air Path and Akron Avenue in Rosemount. Some of the things to point out, the white depiction of the building there is just that with staff parking and visitor parking to the northeast there. You can kind of make that out. Bus parking is behind the building. Main entrance will be on the northeast by the parking lot for staff and visitors, and there will be a bus entrance on the south side of the building. We also have plans for the entrance to this site to occur on, I believe it's Ardrow Avenue, running north and south on the west side of the property. That should give us plenty of room for a tail of cars during drop-off and pickup times. And here is the layout of the building on the main level. The thing I would point out is there's two additional pre-K classrooms that are included up in the upper-right corner. There are the green classrooms, and that is what's different from Eastlake Elementary School. You can also see the highlighted area in red, the gymnasium, which is now going to double as a storm shelter for this building. On the lower level, again, you see the gymnasium highlighted in red, and then we also have a special education wing on the upper-right corner of the building so that all the center-based special education classes are grouped together in one area. And this is a rendering of what the building would look like sitting on that site, as well as this. And the timeline for this building, the plan is to go out for bid in March of 2024, groundbreaking in the spring of '24, and occupancy fall of '25. Dakota Ridge is the second project that will be getting off the ground shortly here. We have five participants on this committee. We've had five meetings, and we've had user group meetings with staff from this building. Here's a floor plan for what the addition could potentially look like. During the referendum phase, we said the addition would include six to eight additional classrooms. We do have six classrooms, including a music room shown here. You will see in the upper-right corner of that addition, we've got two classrooms listed as alternates. And so depending on how bids come in, and we see what the budget can support, those classrooms may or may not be included in this project, depending on how the bids occur. And you can also see the multipurpose gymnasium. It's the larger orange block there that will also double as a storm shelter for this project. And here you can see the floor plan kind of from a different angle, the multipurpose gym and storm shelter on the bottom, the two classrooms that we plan on bidding as alternates right next to the multipurpose gym, and then the other new classrooms that will be included. Here's the layout of the site. The site allows for additional parking, the big gray area to the north there. You do see that that parking will take away that ball field that is currently out there. We have other green space areas next to the parking, as well as a playground built into it, and then a road that runs along the north side of the building. And then this just shows the entire campus that includes the Dakota Valley Learning Center, the district facilities building, the DSC or the District Service Center, and then Dakota This shows a view of the multipurpose gym, also the storm shelter, as well as this view. And that's a depiction of what the interior of the addition could look like. Again, the bidding on this is February of 2024 with groundbreaking in May of '24 and occupancy in the summer of '25. So we're really looking forward to that. And again, this is the first project that'll get off the ground as part of the bond referendum. The Middle School Philosophy Task Force had 12 participants. The majority of those are current middle school principals. They had three meetings, and part of the rationale behind a philosophy group was to say, what do we as a district want a middle school to look like? Not only physically, but also in course offerings and things that are available to students and staff. So they came up with a series of guidance statements. The first one is, the design for the new middle school should be both consistent and flexible. The sixth-grade experience should not differ from seventh and eighth grade. Support for both teacher and student collaboration is important. Staff collaboration should be supported with purposeful, dedicated, professional planning space for teachers outside of the classroom. Student collaboration should be supported with a variety of learning spaces, types, and sizes, and storage should be identified for classroom books, shared resources, et cetera. Storage is always a tricky one because everybody wants storage, and you build storage, and then your schools become overcrowded and you end up using that storage as additional learning space. But we do plan on incorporating plenty of storage into all these projects. So the work of the philosophy group fed into the Middle School Core Planning Group, which is 21 participants, mostly made up of current Rosemount Middle School staff, and they've had eight meetings. They've also taken tours of other newer middle schools, elementary schools, high schools outside the district. schools outside the district. This is just a picture of the committee working at Valley Middle School. And so, as I mentioned, they've toured recently completed projects in other districts. They've developed guiding principles and design criteria. And they review and provide feedback on draft adjacency diagrams at each meeting. So this is a bubble diagram of what the lower level of a new Rosemount Middle School could look at. Now, a caveat here is anything and everything on here is subject to change. Okay? But this is the work that's been done up to this point. You can see the public areas are to the upper part of the diagram. So we have the pool, locker rooms, gymnasium, choir band, kitchen cafeteria, and performance areas. Then to the right, you have the main, I'm sorry, I was thinking of the upper level. To the right, you have the media center. And then those green bubbles with the little circles in them are the classroom or academic wings of the lower level. And you can see the bus entry on the lower level is to the far left-hand side on the Now we get to the main level and the main entrance is the upper right arrow there. And as you come in the building, you have administration, health services, student services. As you move down the hallway, you'll see there's facts and art. And then you have more academic wings on the on the bottom of the diagram. This is a closer look at it. There's been a lot of maneuvering within this diagram, but this is the sixth grade, the main level, as well as the lower level on the left-hand side. You can see science is prominent in both those houses, if you will, or communities. Then you have classrooms and then flexible learning areas and other flexible spaces. Seventh and eighth grade, you can see kind of the similar layout, but a little bit different here. Science is clustered, the three science rooms are clustered together at the front of the house. And then we have our regular classrooms and the flexible learning areas. The timeline for the new Rosemount Middle School is bidding summer of 24, so this summer, groundbreaking fall of 24, and occupancy fall of 26. Then we have dynamic learning furniture. So Carol Haaschild has been very busy continuing the work that was started with the 2015 referendum. I know she sent out surveys to principals to determine what the needs are in the building. And she is in the process of buying furniture and equipping buildings as as they indicated the need. So overall, this is just a diagram. Summer of 25 is when the addition to Dakota Ridge should be completed. Fall of 25, the new elementary school, loading docks at Rosemount Elementary in Northview, not Westview, that was a typo. And then parking lot improvements at Southview and Thomas Lake Elementary Schools. Summer of 26, we should see the completion of the activity centers at Apple Valley High School and Eastview High School. And then the science addition and perhaps the performance area at Scott Highlands Middle School. We get to the fall of 26, we're looking at the opening of the new Rosemount Middle School, parking lots and restrooms at Falcon Ridge. Spring of 27, science classrooms at Valley Middle School. And then fall of 27, we should be completing the renovation at Rosemount High School, the activity centers at Rosemount High School and Egan High School, science rooms at Dakota Hills, loading dock at Northview, and repurpose existing Rosemount Middle School. So that's kind of the long-term plan in a nutshell. These four years are going to be really busy. You can see the Activity Center Task Force will, they had a tour today. Rosemount High School Core Planning is scheduled to start January of 24. Eastview and Apple Valley Activity Center Core Planning Teams will start their work spring of 24. And then Egan High School Activity Core Planning, spring of 25. Scott Highlands Middle School, summer of 24, and Valley Middle School, winter of 24, and spring of 25. So that is the plan. It's been a busy time up to this point. It's going to get even busier once we get shovels in the ground. So with that, I would entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you for the update at this time. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members.
Good job.
Looks like it's all on track. I know it's a big project, so thank you for keeping us up to date.
All right, thank you.
All right, that brings us to our old business portion of the agenda. And I would like to welcome Steve Trone to the podium to go over middle school and
All right, good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I was here at the November thirteenth board meeting where I had an opportunity to present an overview of the annual course revision process for middle schools and high schools in addition to describing some specific proposed new courses for middle schools and high schools for the 24-25 school year. As I mentioned before, course revisions are prepared annually and recommendations are made to add, drop, replicate, restructure, or rename courses each year. Principals discuss those proposed revisions with their staff and the teaching and learning department, followed by discussion with principal colleagues and the directors of secondary education and teaching and learning. Following board approval each year, the course revisions become part of the materials for the registration process that begins in January. A detailed listing of the course revisions is once again included in your packet for reference. And I'm presenting the proposed 2024-25 course revisions this evening as old business and I'm recommending approval. I'm also happy to answer any related questions at this time.
Thank you. This is our second reading, so it is an action item tonight. Are there any board members that would like to motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin and a second by Bianca. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions. Oh, you have a question, sir? Could you could you come up to the podium so that they can get you on the camera? And if you just want to start by just introducing yourself? Yep, yeah, just so we can get you on the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Hansberry. I'm from Apple Valley. The question I have as far as the the course revisions is how as we, the public, get access to those revisions?
Sure, great question. You know, I can actually probably answer that so Steve doesn't have to come up. But if you go onto District 196 website, go onto the school board information, there's a link to board docs, which is where we keep all of our board agendas on the website that's open to the public. Anyone can get in there. And there's a listing of every single course that's being proposed in there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're very welcome. Did I answer that appropriately, Steve?
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome, just want to make sure. Thank you. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, as this is our second reading, I think we answered most of our questions last month in addition to making sure we remembered this is Joel's favorite item every single year. So it's very fitting we vote on it on his last meeting, too. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a seven-zero vote. Thank you very much. Next up, I'd like to welcome Christopher Anyango Robshot to the podium to go over our 2023 payable 2024 property tax levy certification. And before Christopher gets started, I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone that this is our official truth in taxation hearing, and there will be an opportunity at the end of the at the end when Christopher is done for the public to ask any questions.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the public. I am Christopher Anyango Robshot, Director of Finance and Operations. I'll be going through our property tax for 2024 payable 24 levy. Just to start us off, to get the ball rolling, one of the things that we did, this is the second time reviewing this item, I was here in September, September 24th, which was our first reading of this of the payable 24 tax certification. At that moment, the board authorized the proposed limit. Following that presentation, our data, along with data from other entities across the counties or the cities, the taxing, other taxing districts, went to the county and they compiled that data, which was then translated to the public notifications that property taxes within the county received, some of whom may be here wanting to know what happened to their taxes. So September, we make the proposed levy. November, after the election, the public received notification from the county. And now this is our truth in taxation hearing where we now will present what those the impact would be for individual property tax owners and then also give the public an opportunity to actually have a say into the process. I did review this timeline, so beginning in September with the proposed levy, then what the county did, notices to the public and where we are currently on this cycle is the certification, which is basically based on our truth in taxation hearing and then followed by the school board certifying the levy. We start this journey into fiscal year 2025. It almost feels like we're looking backwards before we launch into the future. And what this graph is basically presenting is the main components of revenue which we receive from various sources. So for as we go into FY2025, we know that forty percent of our revenue comes from the state. This graph, which is depicting the initial bond authorization and canceled through that, bond proceeds that we received back in August. And you see on here that fifteen percent of our overall tax, of our overall revenue is based on property taxes. So fifteen percent, about $134 million coming to the to the district in the form of property taxes. Other local sources include fees, payments, and donations. And then federal aids account for three percent of our overall revenues. The general fund, a main component of the activities we are, we conduct, we receive seventy percent of our aid from the state when we just look at the general fund. Now, in this picture, we see that property taxes account for almost a quarter of the revenue that the general fund utilizes. A big portion of funds that are coming here now when we just look at the general fund is the federal government chipping in about four percent and then other local at two percent. Director Stotts did describe a few minutes ago, the money that we will be spending in the bond proceeds. You can see how those projects are going along. And in this slide, now we look at how we spend our general fund dollars, most of which, as we can see, goes toward instruction. So sixty-eight percent going toward direct instruction, fifteen percent toward supporting students. When we look at facilities, administration, and other district support items, that total is about seventeen percent. So if we narrow it down and look at just our property taxes, there are two components when we review this is the voter-approved portion and the non-voter-approved portion of our of our levy. This graph does depict that most of the levies that we have in the district are direct authorized by the by the taxpayers who live here. Operating levy, most recently approved in 2019. Capital projects levy was approved in 2015. And the bond, building bond referendum, most recently approved back in May of 2023. The non-voter-approved components of the levy typically have an aid and levy mix. These are for items such as HUCOM, operating capital, long-term facilities, maintenance program, among other things. For these items, the state has set the statutory limit on what we can levy. And in some instances, if we reduce the levy, the aid also goes down. So it is to the advantage of the district to maximize, to levy at the maximum amount so that we can also recoup the maximum aid allowable in statute. A breakdown of our 24 levy by fund, again, most of what you can see here is that it is mostly going toward our general fund, seventy-six percent of it going toward the general fund. The next big piece going toward our debt service. And in this next slide, you will see that the increase going from FY24 into FY25, basically taxes payable in 2023, our current calendar year, versus taxes payable in 2024. The coming year, $23 million of an increase, seventeen million of that coming out of debt service. And that is to do, to make payments for our initial servicing of the bond payable that was bonds payable that were approved back in May. There is an increase also on the general fund, the two main components of that being our capital projects levy that is tied to our average net tax capacity. When the net tax capacity across the district increases, the capital projects levy amount increases. And that increase for just the capital projects levy in the general fund line was 1.2 million. The rest of the increase within the general fund line was due to the inflationary increase that was embedded in the last referendum that was approved in 2019. This graph tries to mimic the changes in just the school district tax portion for various property values across the state. I will have a few caveats. One of them is when you're looking at this, the lines that are going across assume that there is no change in value for particular property. So if I take the yellow line, for example, and we are following through the home valued at $400,000, I'm assuming that same home was valued at $400,000 in 2019. We did see an increase in 2020 due to the referendum that was passed. And then there was a slight plateau to reduction in the ensuing years. What we are seeing in 2024 is now an increase again to that same property line. So if I look at that yellow line, I have $1,887 taxes labeled in 2020, $2,145 for that same property value in 2024. So between those two, when we go through referendums, one of the things that we try to do is make sure that there's there's a slight increase, if any, between that the taxpayers are experiencing. Now, this is hypothetical because property values change from year to year. So a typical homeowner would see something like this. So if my home was valued, and so what I have here is the average valid home in the district. So if, say, Christopher had the average valued home in the district in 2023, and that's $391,000, the value of that same home in 2019 was 296. So that was taxed at $1,300. Over time, the value of that property has increased. So now in 2024, the proposed levy says my $391,000 valued home will be valued at 407 and the tax increase $2,189 would be the taxes attributable to the school district based on that property value. We do know that as property values increase, the homestead exclusion goes down, which to a lot of us, especially if you're on a fixed income budget, you may not have seen a fixed, yeah, fixed income budget. So if you may not see an increase in your revenue per se, but as the value of your property increases, because there is no more homestead exclusion that's attached to that, that you'll feel a greater than an accelerated rate in your property taxes, which is what we're experiencing, some of our homeowners who called me were basically experiencing. That's seventeen percent. Some of it is due to the bond and some of it is due to the fact that the homestead exclusion is going away. So this is our truth in taxation hearing. And at this point, we would encourage the board, as Corey mentioned earlier, that we would be opening it up for public comment, following which then the board would take action to certify the levy.
Excellent. Thank you, Christopher. This is an action item tonight, so before I open up to comment, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Jackie and a second from Art. Motion by Jackie, and a second from Art. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? And like I said, this is the official truth in taxation hearing. Yes, sir, you want to come up to the podium again?
Good evening once again. My name is Robert Hansberry, I'm with Apple Valley. I'm a senior, as some of you may know, I'm not on a fixed income, I still work, I'm 70 years old, I still work because I can't retire, because I'm seeing a 21% increase in property taxes. These levies or these referendums that come up, I've been watching this for 15 years. There's about 125,000 people in this district, less than 15,000 people vote for these referendums. The school board does a lousy job of making the public aware of this. I first found out about 11 years ago, because I had a flyer on my door talking about a referendum for a vote for a property tax increase. That's how I knew about these, because I didn't get it as, as, as the public. There's not a very large audience here tonight, but I don't understand how in the world the board, the education system, can apply these kinds of referendums that penalize taxpayers in this district when less than 15% of the people even vote. So how in the world does this happen? And on top of that, out of that less than 15%, I think there were about 13,000 people that voted in this November referendum. The notification came out 30 days before the vote. So I don't know how in the world again that we all can talk about a voter-approved levy or referendum when a very, very small percentage of this voting public knows anything about it. And then so seniors, and I'll be fine, fortunately, I still work, I get paid fairly well, but I know a lot of seniors that this board and education is crippling in this district, absolutely crippling. And I'm not sure that anyone on this board, I'm not sure what happened here.
Actually, usually we give a two-minute limit, but since this is the truth in taxation hearing, if you want to wrap up your comments, you can feel free.
Well, it's interesting that you call it a truth in taxation, because there is no truth here. And I'll end it with that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, I saw one other comment, I believe, from the audience, was there?
There is.
Oh, come on up, sir. If you could just start by introducing yourself?
Jim Thielen from Eagan. First, I agree with the previous speaker that talked about the referendum in May. First, it's in a non-regular election cycle of November, in a non-regular election year, and the thing that you sent out in the mail looked like a piece of paper, like junk mail. So that was not very effective, and the voter turned out proved that. I think it was maybe 10% of the registered voters was, I think I heard the number, that's pretty low turnout. I think you should change the policy, the three-fifths majority needs to approve referendums, and then you really have representation of the people. Isn't that what democracy is? 51%. You didn't have that. How many current referendums, levies are out there right now? It sounds like there's three with the most current one, is that correct?
We have one levy currently, and then the bond.
Okay, so it's already on?
One voter-approved levy is in effect right now.
So the proposed taxes show two of them then, correct? So the one in, you talked about one in 2015, and one in 2019, and now one in 2024, right?
I'll have to maybe have Christopher speak to some of that, but I think there's a difference between the bond and the levy.
Okay.
So that's probably where you're getting some of those figures.
So then the levies are the voter-approved. So then, my question is, there is a Minnesota statute 126(c)(17) referendum revenue that allows school board to vote to renew any existing levies without going back to a district-wide vote. Is that true?
We, as of the last legislature section this past year, that's true, we can do it one time, but only once.
So then, on a 10-year levy, you can renew it for another 10 years without going back to the voters?
Correct, per the Minnesota legislature.
That's criminal. That is criminal. You have, what, seven people deciding what to do? That is totally criminal. I just can't say any more than that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, if you want to come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
I think some of you know me. My name is Kat Briggs. Bus driver, go teachers! I'm here to address the levy. I understand that you guys are increasing it again. I am a taxpayer, I'm also an employee of the district, and I do appreciate all that you do for us employees. I understand that the levy is for operations. I am a part of operations, as are the teachers. Operations also need to put gutters on the DOA over there, where we've got bus drivers that are slipping on ice. Okay? That's part of operations. Operations is also a new bus garage. You're building schools, you don't have enough places to park the buses, you need to transport those students. We need to have a new bus garage that will house all the buses that you need to transport, all the students that are going to be in that new middle school, and that new elementary school, and probably another elementary school. You have to have your bases covered. If you're building new schools, you're going to have students, and you need to have those students transported to those schools. Part of your operations is to get those students from home to school, and then back home safely. You need a garage, you need drivers, you need chaperones, you need to make sure you have all of that housed. That is part of your levy. If you're going to continue to increase it to the maximum amount allowed by state law and tax me to move out of the district because I can't afford the continued property tax increases, then do what is required? Make your operations, pay for operations in the district, not iPads, not more departments, not more committees, do operations. Make your district function the way it should, transport your students properly, house your employees properly. We can't even fit our employees in their break room. You have 250 buses, you have double that in drivers and chaperones, and we can't even sit down and have lunch. We don't have a place to do it. Build a bus garage, house the buses, do your operations with your levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, I will turn it to the board for questions or comments. Right, seeing none, this is our second reading, and we have a motion from Jackie, second by Art. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next, we go into our new business portion of the meeting, and I would like to welcome Kaya Bruce to the podium to go over our connection preschool fees for 2024-25.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am sharing with you tonight the first reading of the proposed connections preschool fee increases for the 2024-25 school year. These proposed fees are based on a sliding fee scale correlating to family income and size, and reflect a 2.5% increase from the current year, and rounded to the nearest dollar. These proposed fees are similar to fees in surrounding districts. The annual income ranges are also updated to the current federal poverty guideline levels. I'll be back on January 8th for your approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have now.
Thank you very much. This is new business tonight, so it's not an action item, so I'll go, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from the board? Sounds good. Thank you for being here. We will see you at our next board meeting to take action on this. Next up, under new business, I would like to welcome Danny Duchene to the podium to go over our final budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the school board, Superintendent Krieger, and our District 196 community. Tonight, the district administration team presents the 2023-24 final budget for a first reading and review. Included in the board packet for this evening is a draft of the final budget book, which includes a wealth of information about the various funds in the district and how our final budget is developed. The content presented here tonight, over the next few slides, is a high-level summary of the information provided in that budget book. Before I begin sharing tonight's budget content, a couple of quick thank yous for some other team members in our district. First, we need to say thank you to all the other budget administrators in our district. Every budget cycle lasts one to three months, and it's a complete team effort from the building administrators, the principals, the support staff, our department administrators, putting all this information together so that we can compile this budget book. So a big thank you to them for all their hard work. Secondly, a great big thank you to our students, who allow us to showcase their artwork in our budget books. I've been doing this for five years, putting these books together, and every single book we put together, the artwork gets to be more incredible, more creative, and it just really brings those books to life. And it might not surprise you that most of the comments I get about our books are about how incredible the artwork is. So thank you to our students and our teachers for their support, bringing our budget publication to life. Tonight's budget, in tonight's budget presentation, we're going to focus on four key areas. We're going to do an overview of the entire budget cycle, we're going to talk about the people in our district, we'll go through the actual budget information and the, and the various funds of the district, and then we'll talk about some outcomes, both measurable and immeasurable, that stem from our budget. From a finance and budgeting perspective, the 23-24 budget cycle began in earnest a year ago when the school board certified the 2023 levy. Last spring, the district completed the 23-24 preliminary budget cycle, using that levy that was certified in December of 2022, enrollment projections for this current school year that was approved by the school board in December of 2022, board-approved budget parameters and allocations, as well as estimates for state funding formulas, unsettled contracts, and projections for 2022-23 ending fund balances. The school board approved the 23-24 preliminary budget at the June 26 meeting prior to July 1st, as required by state statute. And as you all know, July 1st marks our transition from one fiscal year to the next. Tonight, we are at the final budget stage. This stage occurs in each, in October each fall, and allows the district an opportunity to adjust our budgets based on real or updated data. This final budget cycle is dependent on actual October enrollment counts for that current school year, updated allocations to the schools based on those updated October enrollment actuals, updated information for any employee group contracts that have been settled between the preliminary budget and the final budget, and updated estimates for any contracts that remain unsettled at the time of preparing the final budget. We also use updated funding formulas that come from the state legislature and projections based on actual enrollment data. Additionally, for the final budget, as you saw last month, when we presented our annual financial audit, we have actual 2022-23 fiscal year ending balances. After the completion of the final budget, the district will have the opportunity for final budget adjustments this coming spring, which primarily rely on grant adjustments. Our district will close out the 23-24 fiscal year from a finance and budgeting standpoint with our annual financial audit, which will be completed this coming summer and fall of 2024. Let's talk about the people in our district. The district's official October 2023 enrollment count was presented to the board at the October 9th meeting. That official October 2 enrollment number of 28,961 was used to create the final budget allocations for all of our schools. This slide presented, along with page 11 in the budget book, provides some more statistics regarding the district's demographics and breakdown of our students. Also included on this slide is an overview of the budgeted FTEs for the final budget. As you can see, the teacher and clerical groups are our largest employee groups in the district. But here are a couple other interesting facts that you might not know about our teaching staff. 65% of our teaching staff has been employed by the district for five years or longer, 36% of our teaching staff has been employed by the district for 15 years or longer, and 80% of our teaching staffs have master's degrees or higher. And thank you to the Human Resources Department for providing a lot of the information about our staff here in the district. Now let's dive into the budget information for the 2023-24 final budget. We'll start with a wide view of our revenues expenditures district-wide by fund. Our total, our total revenue for all funds district-wide for the 2023-24 final budget is $922 million. The general fund, at $490 million, accounts for 53.2% of the projected total revenue. The second-largest share of revenues comes in from the building construction fund, due to proceeds from the sales of bonds as a result of the May 2023 voter-approved building bond referendum. The share of general fund revenue for, for 23-24 is lower this year than a typical year because we are receiving more revenue as part of those proceeds from the sales of those bonds. The third-largest revenue fund is the internal service fund at $71 million, or 7.7% of total revenue. This fund services the district's self-funded health and dental insurance plans and our severance plan. The remaining funds of the district, including the food service fund, community education fund, and dense, and debt service funds, account for 2% or less of our total revenue Shifting over to the expense side of the equation, the general fund at $497 million accounts for 76.4% of total budgeted expenditures, with that total budget expenditures amount of $650 million across all funds. The internal service, internal services fund account for the next-largest share of budget expenditures at $69 million, or 10.6%. The building construction fund accounts for 5.6% of budget expenditures at slightly over $36 million projected to be spent during the 23-24 school year. What you'll notice is the variance in the building construction fund between revenue and expenses, a result of the district receiving the first batch of proceeds from the bond sales, and then as projects progress through the planning phase and into the construction phase, the expenses in the building construction fund will start to go up over the next few Now let's take a minute to dive into our general fund, the district's largest operating fund. As I mentioned before, the total budget revenues in the general fund is $490 million. State sources, which stem primarily from state aids, account for 70.3% of our general fund revenue. Property taxes provide 23.5% of our revenue, with federal sources and local sources accounting for the remaining approximately 6%. Looking at the expense side of the general fund, we'll look at two different ways we cross-section and look at how our general fund is budgeted. As I mentioned, general fund expenses budgeted is $497 million. Student instruction and student support services at 70.5% and 15.7% respectfully, account for the two largest shares of expenditures. Student support services are those non-direct instructional services that directly impact students, such as counseling, social work, and psychology services, just to name a few. This means that over 86% of our general fund expenditures budget is earmarked for items and services and instruction that directly impact our students. Looking at a different cross-section of general fund expenditures is by category classification or object code. The category code is the "what of the purchase." As noted on this slide, over 71% of our general fund expenditures are budgeted for salaries and wages and employee benefits, investing in the people who are directly making the impact in our student lives and our community. If we zoom back out and take a look at the 23-24 final budget fund balance projections, the general fund ended the 22-23 school year with a fund balance of $91.6 million. And based on the revenues and expenditures we've discussed here tonight, we anticipate a 23-24 ending fund balance of $84.8 million. The district projects a 23-24 ending fund balance in the nutrition services fund at nearly $10.1 million. One thing to note about the food service fund is that with the state offering free meals to all students this year, we anticipate higher revenues and higher expenditures throughout that fund. The community education fund projects a relatively flat fund balance trend this year, starting with $3.86 million at the beginning of this year, and ending the 23-24 school year with a projected fund balance of $3.9 million. a projected fund balance of $3.9 million. In looking at the district's non-operating funds, we project the building construction fund within any fund balance of $274 million. It's important to note that the negative beginning balance for the 23-24 school year in the building construction fund is a result of expenses that incurred as planning started right away after the May referendum was passed. So, those are expenses from May and June before we transitioned over to the fiscal year and before we had received any bond proceeds for that particular fund. The debt service fund, which is used to accumulate resources for and the payment of the district's long-term debt obligations, projects a $16.6 million ending fund balance, and our internal services fund with an ending fund balance of $14.5 million. Lastly, our fiduciary funds, which include our other post-employment benefits, with a 23-24 ending fund balance of $53.4 million. In looking at all the funds together, overall, the district began the 23-24 fiscal year with a total fund balance of $176.9 million. Based on the information in the final budget, we project a total ending fund balance district-wide as of June 30, 2024 of $448 million. Now, it's important for us to highlight the outcomes we experienced as a result of the staff bringing our budget to life and putting it into action. Some outcomes are measurable, easily measurable: 89% four-year graduation rates, serving $2.5 million meals each year, 21.3 average ACT score, which continues to be higher than both the state and national averages, multiple team and individual MSHSL state championships and high finishes at state, as we saw with our adaptive teams earlier tonight, and dozens of National Merit Scholar recognitions each year, just to call out a few. We also need to keep reminding ourselves that not all outcomes are easily measurable: the professional and personal relationships developed that may or may not last a lifetime, the individual and team learning and growth for our students and staff that they experience each year, and the memories and stories that our people carry with them. These are all outcomes that are results of this budgeting process and a result of the people in our district, both students and staff. Our recommendation tonight is that the school board review the 23-24 final budget and approve the budget on the second reading at the January 8 regular school board meeting.
This is new business tonight, so we will look at it again at our January 8 meeting. But before we do that, are there any questions or comments on the final budget from the Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
If you are interested in looking at more information, the 64-page budget, final budget document is online. You can go to District196.org. It is there. It's a budget book, and it is online, and that's where you can see the artwork that Mr. Duchesne was talking about. But it goes through all kinds of sections about general funding, our budget, talks about the school board and the administration, talks about our enrollment numbers. There's a lot of information in that book if you so need. So, thank you, Mr. Duchesne, very nicely done tonight.
Thank you.
Sachin?
Thank you. I just also wanted to just kind of build on what Jackie was saying. You know, it's not just the numbers, it's the story, and I think the book does a wonderful job with capturing the story, and you've done a wonderful job giving a summary of that as well. It's really not what the numbers we have, it's what we allow that numbers to do. So, a really, really good job in trying to build emotion into the numbers and weaving that wonderfully impactful story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Sackoden?
I just wanted to echo what my colleague said. So, not only the artwork, as I was reviewing the budget document, it is really, really clear that a considerable effort has gone into this preparation. Just wanted to say thank you, since we have the team that works on the budget, just wanted to say thank you and good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Bianca?
Yes, I always have a question. So, the building construction fund, it says that it's already spent $36 million out of that, and I'm just curious, is that just startup cost to get this work going? Is woold like, you know, is it all the woold? Where, how, because you gave us a nice breakdown of the general fund. Can you tell me a little bit about the building construction fund and how that 36 has been spent?
So, just to clarify, that 36 million has not already been spent.
Okay.
That's going to be what's projected to spend from July 1st of this year all the way through June 30th. So, that will start.
Perfect.
What will be included in there is pre-planning process, what they're doing right now when they go off for bid, but then when we actually start to break ground, as Mark alluded to earlier this evening, all the way through June 30th.
Got it.
So, those are just budgeted expenditures, that's not an actual amount that has already been spent since July 1st.
Great, thanks for clarifying. And then the next time you come, that will look even bigger, right? If I remember how that works?
The next time we come, we'll present the same book. We won't have actuals in it, but yes, as the year goes on, that number where it's at right now will grow, but 36 is what's projected to be spent total by the end of the year as of June 30th.
Thanks for clarifying.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from board members? Right. Thank you very much for being here, and also, I'm just going to second that budget book online for anyone else. I just think the board feels very strongly that as a steward of public dollars, we're very transparent in how it's spent, and it's not easy to be transparent when you have a budget our size. But being able to put that much detail in our budget book, start from a very high level and break it down all the way to the different funds, is one of the best ways to, for anyone to really understand the budget. So, I appreciate you and your team doing that and putting that together, and also telling the stories behind the budget as well. Thank you. All right. That brings us to almost our last agenda item of the evening. Are there any board members with items they would like to share? Art?
I've got one. You know, this, being Joel's last meeting, I just wanted to say thank you to Joel for, both for his friendship and for his informal mentorship in my time on the board. He's been this constant person I can turn to. I don't think there's ever been a question that I've asked Joel over my 17 or so years on the board that he didn't know the answer to. And so, I really appreciate that, that he's, you know, I've kind of relied on him pretty heavily as kind of institutional memory and kind of knowing, like, how things work. So, I just want to say thank you, Joel. I've really appreciated, you know, your steady presence on the board. I always, you know, look to you, and, you know, when times are kind of rocky, you're that steadying force, and I really appreciate that. Wish you Godspeed in your retirement. We're going to miss you, but wish you and Luanne and the rest of the family the best. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Other board members? Sachin?
I'll jump on the Joel bandwagon as well. I also want to echo a lot of what Art said. You've been that mentor, friend, guide to me the whole time. I just, you know, you are the definition of what it means to be a voice of our community on the board. You've always had that voice of reason. You've been thoughtful, kind, and everything. And as much as I will miss having you as a colleague, I know our friendship will continue on much beyond this as well. I could speak your volumes about what you've done as a board member, but you're just a wonderful human being, and I think that's the start and end of it. So, thank you for everything. Congratulations to you and Luanne. I know you have a lot of wonderful adventures ahead, and it's just been my honor and privilege to get to know you and work alongside with you this whole time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie?
Well, I don't even know what I want to say after working with Joel for 20 years. Joel is so steady, as you said, so knowledgeable, so kind, so caring about the students in our district. I told Luanne the other night, I'm not going to talk to her anymore, but she didn't really care because Joel wasn't re-elected, so she didn't have a lot of sway anymore. He was done. I, Joel, if you don't know, Joel has been not only really active on our school board, but regionally and statewide. He's been president of, Chair of CE for...
How many years?
18.
18. At schools for equity and education, and he also worked on MSBA as a regional rep, on the Minnesota School Boards Association, rep for this area for several, I don't know, five or six years.
Just three on that one.
Oh, just three on that one.
Just three.
Joel made me laugh. I'm going to miss you a lot. I know where you're going to retire from, and it does get phone service, so... So, we will get to talk. The other day, he told me, he said, "You know, we're kind of like an old married couple." He said, "We don't always agree, but we always know we have each other's back." And so, Joel, thank you very much. I'm going to miss you a lot. And I think on behalf of, I hope on behalf of the students, the parents, and the community, I can say thank you on their behalf too. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Sackoden?
I'd like to add it. I'm going to be missing a table mate. Just wanted to say thank you. You have done a wonderful job, and 20 years, you have worked for the betterment of our district. And as a newest board, one of the newest board members, I've always enjoyed for being a welcome and positive, and always remaining positive even tough times. We're definitely going to miss you. That I wish you well. I understand that you deserve some relaxing time after 20 years. That's significant, and I just wanted to say, your legacy will continue. We're always going to remember your contribution. Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Bianca?
So, the one thing that didn't get brought up, so, Joel, I mean, I echo what everybody else said, but you've been such a strong advocate for special ed as well. And for that, I thank you as a special ed parent. Being on the Seek and your perspective, having an older student child and somebody who's coming into that, I valued. So, thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, before I turn it over to you, Joel, if you have anything you want to close us out with, but I would just also like to add, gosh, you've been such a mentor on the board. When you don't know where to start, I think Joel's the one you usually start with. We're definitely going to miss you. I know I'm going to miss you, having someone to call, ask questions of when I don't understand something or just need a second set of eyes. I always appreciate that. So, best of luck in your retirement, and congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Did you have anything?
Well, I think Mary wanted to jump in, but then I will.
We do our other business real quick?
I'll just jump in on this quick, and then I have an ending thing. So, I just want to add to everything that your board members have said. Oh, I'm going to get kind of choked up. You have been absolutely phenomenal in so many things that I don't even know, kind of the unsung hero of, you were really instrumental in starting the Legislative Advisory Council, really working closely with our legislators to advocate for public education. I think you've worked closely with all of our different groups. You always have students at the center of your decision-making, and you support staff. And I think that you just have been very open about what are the best things for this district, and we're going to miss your history, we're going to miss all the things, but I think most importantly, we're going to miss you, who you are, and what you bring in. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll probably get a little choked up here. I'm already getting a little choked up here. So, first of all, I just want to say, as an old Scandahouvian, I'm not comfortable being in the spotlight, so I prefer being in the background. So, this is a little out of my comfort zone, but I do want to say a few things. First of all, just being on this board has been just a wonderful, it's been my privilege, my pleasure, my honor to serve this district for the past 20 years, and I am eternally grateful to the voters of this district who gave me this opportunity. And I guess, first of all, I shouldn't say first because I've already been talking, but I do want to start with an apology to the district because when I got on this board, this was the best school district in the state, and now that I'm leaving, we're the best school district in the state, and so by that measure, I've accomplished nothing. So, I just want to put that out there. But I have a lot of people that I want to thank. First of all, I want to thank my family. My wife is here today, rocking one of my campaign T-shirts for the last time, and I know you're all saying, "Hey, where's my campaign T-shirt?" Well, the bottom line is that there were only two of those ever made, so... That's why you don't have one if you wanted one. But my wife and my kids and the support for the past 20 years, mostly support somewhat tolerance of me and the time that I've spent on the board, but I appreciate that. I also would obviously like to thank the three superintendents that I've worked with, John Curry, Jane Behrens, and Mary Krieger. All of them were really the best possible superintendent for the time that they were in office, and really helped bring our district to the greatness that it is today. And, you know, Mary and I go back way before she was superintendent due to my work in special ed and her work in special ed, and so we have a very special relationship, and I'm truly going to miss that. And, but we'll talk. In my time on the board, I have had the pleasure of working with 13 other board members, six of whom are here today, and I can honestly say that I have learned from every single one of them. I have become a better board member, become a better person from working with every one of you and your predecessors on this board. And at the risk of offending those that I don't single out, I do want to single out three, that being Sachin and Art and Jackie, being as, at this table, I've been with you the longest, and, you know, Sachin, you are the voice of calm, the voice of reason, and no matter what it is, you will always bring it around to, well, what's the bigger picture? What else does this affect? And a lot of times, I've had my thought on something, and then you've come up with something, it's like, oh, we need to think about that part of it too. And I really appreciate you bringing us around to issues that are not always obvious to everybody. And like I say, you're calm influence and just the fact that, you know, I can call you anytime and say, "What should we do here? What's your thought on this?" And Art, just the rock, the, I always appreciate the fact that you never sugarcoat anything. And that, you know, when we need a strong answer, that you are the one that's there with that, and I've always appreciated your guidance on issues, especially as we wandered through the past four years. And Jackie, I can't say enough, we definitely are that old married couple, but we, you have been the support, you know, since before I got on the board, when we first met, when I was first running, and you've just been there for me ever since, and just what I've learned from you and just on being a board member and being a person and all about education, and I just can't say enough, so thank you. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to the students, staff, taxpayers, residents of this district who have supported me over the past 20 years, and I hope that I've lived up to your expectations, and I wish you the best as the future goes on, and I see that the future's already here because my microphone is already labeled "Anna." So, they're moving on, and that's okay. So, anyway, thank you so much, everybody, and I appreciate this little bit of time to have my few words, and I'm going to miss you all, and best of luck with everything.
I hate, I hate talking after that, but we have to acknowledge, because that was a perfect way to end it, but I think we also, I have one other update to share. I think in June, when you had announced you weren't seeking reelection, it gave us all six months to prepare for the fact that you would be leaving us. But another board member here wasn't so nice to the board because she won election, I'm talking about Director Vernig, won election to seat 52B during a special election to fill Representative Richardson's spot. So, congratulations to you as well, Bianca, and we will probably be missing you soon when you take, assume that office as well. you take, assume that office as well.
Yeah, I'm, so to my fan club who immediately said, when are you resigning? I don't know yet. I have to wait for the election to be certified, and then we will set up a swearing-in date. So I plan to serve all the way until the very end, and then, you know. So it's, it's a little in flux right now at this point, but yeah, thank you for, and thanks to the voters and everybody. I hope to be able to take what I know from here to the next level, right? And advocate, we're the third largest school district in the state, you know, you could use some representation there, so I think it'll be good.
So we understand why you didn't give us six months, but we're still mad at you. But I'm just joking. For, I've gotten a lot of questions about what we're going to do when that happens, and just so the public knows, we are required to appoint a board member in the interim when the seat is vacated, and I will be sharing what that process looks like at our next January 8th regular school board meeting. With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for her comments.
Okay, I just have one quick update, just to let the community know that we have a group of people, stakeholders, working on a district task force this month to develop recommendations about changing next year's calendar in order to provide time for teachers to receive training that is required under state law and is necessary for implementing the requirements of the REIT Act. The task force includes students, parents, teachers, and administrators, and it's scheduled to finish meeting this month to make some recommendations to the administration. Any proposed changes to next year's calendar would be presented by administration and would require school board approval.
Meeting to a close, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, last motion from Joel, seconded by Art. All those in favor of adjournment, saying aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned.